Mr. Carpenter. Mrs. Fisher. Mrs. Ramasco. Here. Mr. Carpenter. Here. Mr. Metz. Here. Mr. Metz. Here. Mr. Metz. Here. Mr. Metz. Here. Page five. Central office. The board of school members have an effective session on Wednesday, April 10. Tell us to have a good school hours. We are subject to a 25 part which in every confidential email. We are sharing with our elimination matters.
I deserve to be flesh and white.
A signed primary state of a binder of communications dated April 4th, 2024 to April 10th, 2024 submitted by Baden-Ambler Charter School in support of renewal, which will be circulated to the board.
Thank you. I have my own agenda. No? Okay. One last thing before we start the presentation for Mrs. Amadio. It has come our attention that there might be a shortage of agendas. So also, on the line page, you should be able to get a copy of your agenda with you on your phone or your tablet. With that, this is Amadio.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. I am here to present the proposed final budget for 24, 25, 25 school year. If you look to the summary page and I pass these out to everyone at the table, the board. This is the information that I provided last month in the budget. There are sort of slight changes, as you can see, under draft two. The beginning three balance is the same at 10,873,340. Revenues had increased a bit at 3,677,660. And our expenditures decreased a bit of 83,700. So you can see that that leaves us here for the end three balance for the 24, 25 draft two. If you go to the next slide, you'll see some of the changes that I'm referring to. Insurance opt-out for salary, there's a salary change with insurance opt-out that increased by $15,000. The next slide will show you health, dental, vision, wealth, and long-term disability. Our health rates actually decreased when they were having files in the areas. And that's from 11% to 9%. We had anticipated it on going up 11% initially received. And after attending the meeting on Friday, it was actually 9%. The next slide is supplies and books. Supplies increased by $11,000 in the elementary buildings in total, and $20,000 with a stronger connection grant. And books increased by $100,000, $100,000. The next slide is equipment. Equipment actually decreased a little to 77,000. New equipment went up 133,000 for a bag scanner, but it will be offset by the revenue from the stronger connections grant. So that'll balance and wash each other out. And replacement equipment increased $30,000 for full house sound systems speakers. The next slide is the state funding. The state share for our social security reimbursement increased by $6,586. And our state share for retirement reimbursement increased $8,074. And on the next slide, we'll see our federal funding increased by $353,000 from the stronger connection title for grant for 2024, 25 school year. And they're made of about $583,370,000, $370,000, will be utilized in future budget years. The next slide, you can see what's next, like I had stated previously, we'll continue to analyze and adjust the budget, the budget drafts, and based on salaries, health insurance, medical services, tuition expense, retirement, staffing changes, and net revenue. And I will provide updates as we deliver our revenues on our next meeting, April 17th, and May 8th, and 15th. And finally, we'll pass the final budget at the regular meeting on May 15th. I also passed out another I O T L, and that's basically the P D E form 2024, and that's what we report to the state. And this information in this packet here is the same information that I had just shared with you in the slide. If you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to me. It's all in half. Thank you.
Any questions for Mrs. Amadio? Okay. At this time, district residents may come forward to comment on agenda items only. Each person must state their first and last name and address prior to speaking. Each resident will be allowed three minutes and can speak only once. This period for public comment prior to the standing committee reports will be limited to one half hour. Although not required, board members desiring to address questions or concerns may do so after the residents comments questions forth the conclusion of the committee reports. There will still be an opportunity for residents to comment on any business relevant to the Ambergeria School District under old and new business at the end of the meeting. It's also important to note that when you come up, please get your questions out so that we utilize, you utilize your time as well as possible. So with that, public comment may begin. For agenda items only, as a reminder, district residents.
Are you hearing me?
That's better. Thank you.
You don't know her. My address at 285, Ambergeria. And so you, if you know anything, I was the mayor of Ambergeria. I'm asking you to say, just be with you as arrested, and as a person, her daughter thinks maybe, and is now, and I say that really in Ambergeria, correct? So, my, how many thirty do you think to talk about being attacked?
Madam Mayor. So this, so this part of the district's public comment is just for agenda items?
Is it that one?
It is a lot on the agenda.
Do you want to say that, huh?
There is a second public comment opportunity, which I believe would be more appropriate for the comments that, that you begin to deliver. That is at the conclusion of the meeting. So if you look at the agenda, or if you have one available, there'll be a second invitation towards the end of the meeting. So that will follow kind of the, the district discussion about a handful of personnel items and action items. So you'll see that happen first in the course of our meeting. You'll hear the board review agenda items, at least as they exist right now for next week's meeting. Well, it's all right.
I agree with your agenda, I actually.
It's okay.
It's fine if I'm on your school. I will not make a comment. I mean, I thought.
It's fine.
But if he needs on the comment, it's my bad.
I understand it entirely. You'll be all set.
Yeah, just for authority, it is not on the agenda tonight. So.
Second half. Yes.
Hello.
Hi, Daisy Vinnie, for your answer to a question on the final budget. So I saw your screen up there, had a couple of questions about some of the numbers, but I'll go back and take you to the next week. My question is, how much are you transferring from your fund balance to make this budget? Are you transferring any money into the fund balance?
We don't have a budget yet.
Let her ask all the questions, and then I'll, then I'll answer.
That's my question. So are you making, are these your plans based on what you're looking at, and working towards that, going to have to make you move money from the fund balance? Is my question that I normally do ask. And the other question is, you put a number up there for books, it's like on slide two three, about funding for the books. Is that all schools, just the elementary schools? I'm curious to see where that number of books that you purchase comes from. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, a couple of comments there. You want me to answer those, Mr. President?
Please.
Okay. So, as far as the budget goes, obviously, when you make this, these are, you know, anticipated, and it's still subject to change until you approve the final budget. That being said, we look at this at what we anticipate our revenues and expenditures will come in at. We're always conservative in nature. So to answer the question, right now, when you look at, in the 24, 25 draft two, it's saying that we would utilize about $6,839,302. That's very, that's being very conservative in both expenditures and revenues, but that is what it states out of the $10,874,340 that we had. It doesn't necessarily mean that, you know, every revenue will come in exactly the way it is, or that every expenditure will be expended. We try to operate in a very conservative manner. You could see this through most of our work that we have, usually not spent fund balance or spent, if we ever have, which we haven't yet, but if we do, we hope that there would be considerably less than that amount. But that is our conservative estimate. So to answer the question, that is what in draft two, all the way to the final, it could change, that's what it's looking at as far as utilizing fund balance. Although, doesn't necessarily mean because that's what you budgeted, that's exactly where it will come in at, and that we will utilize every one of those dollars. So that's kind of the answer to that question. As far as transfer, or the question about books, you will see, as we discuss some things on the agenda, we, we did get a little more ready-to-learn block grant funding, so you will see that purchase. That will probably come out of this year, the 24, 23, 24 school year. Then, I think what was listed on the slide was an increase of about $100,000 on top of what we already had in the budget, to make sure we have enough books that you will also see on this agenda tonight. Most of those are dealing with implementing to align to the new steel standards and updating our science curriculum, but you'll see it on the agenda when we get to it, we can discuss it further, but you're talking about K to five science, you're talking about middle school science, and also mathematics in a majority of our subjects, middle school and high school. Keep in mind that the district just recently utilizing the previous Esters grant, was able, through learning loss funds, to be able to purchase supplemental materials, as well as the K to five reading and math curriculum as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pescarella. Anyone else? Okay, with that, legislative action for this evening, financing budget. Mr. Zachi.
Number one, 24, 25 proposed, proposed final budget is recommended to approve the proposed final general operating fund budget for the 24, 25 fiscal year with expenditures of $58,979,828. The proposed final budget is on display for public inspection at the administration office and also online website. Number two, it is recommended to accept the bipartisan Safer Communities Act, Stronger Connections title for competitive grant in the amount of $583,370. The funding will be used for mental health support and safety. And number three, it is recommended the district become a member of TIPS, a national purchasing cooperative that offers access to competitively procured purchasing contracts to its members in compliance with the school code for procurement law compliance. This is pending solicitor final review. Is there questions or comments on one to three? Besides the one that I have. As far as the budget, Miss Amadio, how much is being transferred to charter schools such as Baden Academy, Lincoln Park, Cyber? How much of our budget in dollars and/or percentages do you know offhand?
I have it from last, or last meeting. I could pull it up if you give me a couple of minutes for that.
Sorry to put you in the spot.
That's okay. Where is it? It's yours. Just give me a second. Based on my last, the last information that I had, our tuition to other schools, which included the charter schools, had increased by $664,836, the exact amount for the charter school. I'm looking through here, give me a second.
What was the base number that the increase was on? Do you know that?
What it was based on? The increase, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
The increase is based on the numbers.
What was that number, and then increase 600,000? Do you?
I'm getting it for you.
I'm sorry, it's really hard to hear you guys. You guys can either, I'm putting on, I'm trying to get louder. I'm just trying to.
I need the charter school numbers.
Thank you.
And I have it, I feel like I have it.
Walsh is trying to get the exact number. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
All right, I'm gonna talk loud, but don't think I'm, I'm whirling, okay? I just want to make sure everyone can hear me, so. Walsh is looking for that. I think what we're talking about is every year, we look at the total budget, there are some things that come out, and the state works through a form that comes up with a new charter school number for both special education students and regular ed students. And that number may increase or decrease. We did see an increase overall on those numbers, especially in the special education realm. She would have the exact calculations, and those are kind of figured out throughout the year. So you do want to budget, you know, a little bit more for that increase in case the costs go up. I know she's looking it up, but I know that we spend roughly, if I'm correct, somewhere in the ballpark between six and seven million dollars a year, but I know you could get the exact amount, I know that was what was requested, but that gives you a general consensus of where we're at. And I know you were looking through that, working through the P D E form, and increasing that by a certain amount due to the increase in cost per student.
Thank you, Dr. Pescarella. Matt, are you okay if we circle back to that?
Yeah. No, I just wanted that general number to be floated out there, so if we're looking at six to seven million, and then we're adding $664,000, everybody has a general idea.
I think we might even have come closer to eight, but I hesitate to say that until we get the number. What, what your final number was that you worked on, because we discussed that, and obviously, that is something we're going to continue to discuss, as we said, as we review, before we, you know, approve the final, but that gives you, I gave you what I believe is a lower estimate of what, what was included in there.
As a point of information, she can get that later, but I will recommend items one through three to be approved.
Okay, thank you. Second. Roll, please.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Fitzgo?
Yes.
Mrs. Keigho?
Yes.
Mrs. Ramasco?
Yes.
Mr. Kovacevic?
No to one and three, and yes to two.
Mr. Metz?
Yes.
Ms. Young? Mr. Zachi?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Salary, schedule, and labor relations, Mr. Kovacevic.
Ambergeria Educational Support Personnel Association Cafeteria Branch Agreement. It is recommended to approve the agreement between the Ambergeria School District and the Ambergeria Education Support Professional Association Cafeteria Branch for the period of July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2030, pending solicitor final review. Are there any questions?
I just have a comment. I'd like to thank all of the folks that work in our cafeteria branch, and excited that we were able to work together to come up with a fair, fair deal to continue our work into the future. We appreciate what each and every one of them do for our students, providing very important meals, and they're a great group to work with, so I'm glad we're able to get this done and take care of them, and it was a good negotiation, fair and good negotiation process. You know, the, the average increase, which we could get for the general public, but if you're looking at payroll, was, you know, in the upper three percent, 3.8, maybe something around that, that range. So we feel that that was fair and equitable, we worked on some language items for both sides, and we're thankful for what they do for us each and every day. Thank you.
Is there a motion? Is there a motion? Is there?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
To accept item number one under salary, schedule, and labor relations.
Okay, I think I heard a second. Roll, please.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Fitzgo?
Yes.
Mrs. Keigho?
Yes.
Mrs. Ramasco?
Yes.
Mr. Kovacevic?
Yes.
Mr. Metz?
Yes.
Mr. Zachi?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Personnel, Ms. Young is not with us today, so Mrs. Fisher, Mrs. Keigho, would you be so kind?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Number one, 2023, 2024 spring coaches. It is recommended the following individuals be approved to fill the designated spring coaching positions for the 2023, 24 school year at a salary as per the terms of the collective bargaining agreement, pending receipt of current clearances, satisfactory drug screening, TB testing, and responses by current former employers to Act 168 screening, provided the school year allows coaches to hold spring sports as normal. Number one, middle school softball. George Alvarez, assistant coach, stipend of $2,050. Troy Hartman, volunteer coach, no renumeration. Brian Strong, volunteer coach, no renumeration. Any questions? Track Dakota Pritchard, assistant coach, split stipend, $1,000. Boys volleyball, David Stubgen, volunteer, no renumeration. Number two, 2024, 25 head coaches. It is recommended the following individual be approved to fill the designated head coaching position for the 2024, 25 school year at a salary as per the terms of the collective bargaining agreement, pending receipt of current clearances, satisfactory drug screening, TB testing, and responses by current former employers to Act 168 screening, provided the school year allows coaches to hold sports as normal. Wrestling Larry Knopf Snyder, stipend of $4,300. Boys basketball coach, it is recommended to approve Jonas Ankrum as the boys basketball head coach at a salary of $6,000 for the 2024, 25 season, as per the employee agreement, pending receipt of current clearances, satisfactory drug screening, TB testing, and responses by current former employers to Act 168 screening, provided the school year allows coaches to hold sports as normal. Number four, girls' basketball coach, it is recommended to approve Lethera Harrison as the girls' basketball head coach at a salary of $6,000 for the 2024, 25 season, as per the employment agreement, pending receipt of current clearances, satisfactory drug screening, TB testing, and responses by current former employers to Act 168 screening, provided the school year allows coaches to hold sports as normal. Number five, 2024, 25 coaches. It is recommended the following individuals be approved to fill the designated fall coaching positions for the 2024, 25 school year at a salary as per the terms of the collective bargaining agreement, pending receipt of current clearances, satisfactory drug screening, TB testing, and responses by current former employers to Act 168 screening. TB testing and responses by current former employers to Act 168 screening, provided the school year allows coaches to hold fall sports as number, as normal, excuse me. Number one, football, Shane Newhouse, assistant coach, stipend four thousand two hundred. Neil Katch, assistant coach, four thousand two hundred. Ron Wilson, equipment manager, three thousand five hundred. Tom Baranik, weightlifting coach, three thousand five hundred. Shane Dablock, middle school coach, three thousand three fifty. And the following remaining are no renumeration. Greg Kimbrough, volunteer coach. Craig Wiltre, Wiltrek, volunteer coach. Mike Smajanic, volunteer coach. And Deontay McIntosh, volunteer coach. Number six, homeless liaison coordinator. It is recommended to ratify Joanne Hoover as a homeless liaison coordinator to be paid a stipend of two thousand eight hundred and thirty-three dollars for the 2023-24 school year. Any questions on one through six?
Okay, item number seven, ABC Transit bus driver slash aide. It is recommended to approve the individuals listed as operators, attendance and maintenance for ABC Transit Incorporated for the 2023-2024 school year, pending receipt of current clearances, satisfactory drug testing, TB testing and responses by current slash former employers to Act 168 screening. Van drivers, Brandon Call, Megan Dawson, Paul Montell. Aides, Diane Gilliam and Belinda Williams. Item number eight, professional employee. It is recommended to improve, to approve Ty Baker as the Ambridge Area Middle School slash High School mathematics teacher at a salary of forty-eight thousand seven hundred and eighty-one dollars, step one master, effective date to be determined based upon the completion of student teaching at Slippery Rock University as per the terms of the Ambridge Area Education Association Agreement, pending receipt of current clearances, satisfactory drug screening, TB testing and responses by current slash former employers to Act 168 screening and PDE certifications if applicable. Item number nine, mentor teacher. It is recommended to approve the following teacher assignment for the 2023-2024 school year as per the collective bargaining agreement. Mentor teacher, Ken Witheroe, new teacher, Ty Baker. Item number 10, professional employee. It is recommended to approve the extension of Cory Bailey as a grant-funded elementary guidance counselor as per the terms of the Ambridge Area Education Association Agreement. This position is contingent on grant funding and will not be continued if grant funding is not secured. This extension is for, is for January 1st, 2026 through June 30th, 2026, to be paid for through the bipartisan Safer Communities Act Stronger Connections Title IV Competitive Grant. Item number 11 is a retirement. It is recommended to approve the resignation due to retirement of Mary Lee Hawkeye, a paraprofessional at the Ambridge Area Middle School, effective July 15th, 2024, with regret. Item number 12, it is recommended to approve the resignation of Daniel Kalinic, a custodian at Economy Elementary, effective April 5th, 2024, with regret. Are there any questions on items seven through 12?
Mr. President, I'd like to move for the adoption of items one through 12. Do you have a question?
I do have a question on number 10.
Hold that thought.
Are the dates correct? Is it January 1st, 2026?
Yes. We, if you might recall, and it's a good point you brought it up, we have current grant funding that runs into another set of grant funding, followed by this last little bit of grant funding. Good question.
Okay, I'll reiterate that. I'd like to move for the adoption of items one through 12.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Fisher, second?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Keigho. Any further discussion? Okay, roll call please.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Fitzco?
Yes.
Mrs. Keigho?
Yes.
Mrs. Ramasco?
Yes.
Mr. Kovacevic?
Yes to everything but item three. I abstain.
Mr. Metz?
Yes to everything but number seven. I abstain.
Mr. Zachi?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on, the committee reports, non-voting agenda items, education and technology. Mrs. Ramasco?
Thank you, President Carpenter. Number one, CTEVolve Express Dual Lane. It is recommended to accept a quote from Inc. Labs Buffalo LLC for a four-year period for two CTEVolve Express Dual Lane Scanner software and support at a cost of two hundred and thirty-one thousand five hundred and seventy-seven dollars to provide security at schools, to be paid for through the bipartisan Safer Communities Act Stronger Connections Title IV Competitive Grant, through the national bidding process. Any questions on number one? Number two, Rachel's Challenge Professional Development. It is recommended to approve the purchase of Rachel's Challenge Professional Development digital resources and staff, student and community sessions at a cost of thirty-one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, to be paid for through the bipartisan Safer Communities Act Stronger Connections Title IV Competitive Grant. Any discussion or questions on number two? I just have one. Dr. Pescarella, can you give us a little bit? I know you, I'm aware of this. Can you give everybody a little bit more information about what this is all about?
Sure, and I know Dr. Filipowski is probably out there, so if she wants to chime in at all, she can. But basically, Rachel's Challenge is a, you know, countrywide renowned program, started based upon the child, one of the child, children who were the first to pass away at the Columbine mass shooting, who when they found their journal, talked about wanting to always find kids who may be bullied or don't fit in and what you could do to help those kind of children to be successful. So the parents kind of organized this into, and it kind of grew into a very comprehensive program to help students to try to prevent these types of things from happening in the future, to be kind and those types of things. So it, this program will help our students, staff and community to engage in that process that will help, I think, not only prevent, hopefully prevent something like that from happening here in Ambridge, but more importantly, create an environment that is friendly, that teaches kids to be kind to one another, to go the extra mile for the kid who may not be fitting in or going through some rough things. So I think it's going to be an excellent program. Dr. Filipowski, did you have anything you wanted to add? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Number three, McGraw-Hill Elementary Science. It is recommended to approve the adoption of a five-year McGraw-Hill Science Series, Inspire Science, grades K through five. The total cost of this series is two hundred and eighty-four thousand six hundred and twelve dollars and sixty-seven cents. Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of that will be paid for through the Ready to Learn Grant. Any questions on that one? Number four, Savas Learning Company LLC Science. It is recommended to approve the adoption of a five-year Savas Learning Company Science Series, Elevate Science, grades six through eight. The total cost of the series is one hundred and thirty-seven thousand five hundred and ninety-one dollars and forty cents. Any discussion on that one? I do have one question. Is this, do we have a plan in place for the high school sciences as well?
Like, that would start next year. But I would only take that all the way up to biology. I wouldn't go all the way through because your AP classes, they do their own thing.
Okay, so biology will be considered?
And they kind of like to do in the high school their own resources as well compared to whole curriculum studies. And if you remember around Christmas, we bought them a lot.
Yes, okay. Thank you. Any other discussion? Number five, Savas Learning Company LLC Math. It is recommended to approve the purchase of a five-year Savas Learning Company Math Series in Vision Math and digital licenses, high school, middle school, Algebra I, Algebra II and Geometry. The total cost of this series is one hundred and thirty-three thousand four hundred and seventy dollars and twenty-one cents. Any discussion on that item? Number six, senior project. It is recommended to approve, it is recommended the Ambridge Area High School Senior Projects Manual for the 2024-2025 school year be approved. Any discussion on that? I'm assuming we'll get a copy of that. Dr. Pescarella?
Yes, I think Dr. Subsip was trying to finalize that and then you were going to send that out.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Number seven, tuition income. It is recommended to approve the attendance of student 363433 in accordance with the school board policy 607, tuition income for the remainder of the 2023-2024 school year and to assess a tuition charge in accordance with the school code in the amount, total amount of two thousand three hundred and twenty-seven dollars and fourteen cents. Any discussion on that? Number eight, 2024 Adventures in Education Club Field Trip Addendum. It is recommended to approve the Adventures in Education Club to use Charleston, South Carolina as an alternate field trip location to the already board-approved field trip to Nashville, Tennessee, which was approved at the March 20th, 2024 Board meeting for the purpose of pricing comparison. Any discussion on that item? Number nine, club formation. It is recommended to approve the formation of a district-wide club, Mary Makers Club, to promote STEAM education with the sponsor to be paid a stipend of four hundred and seventy dollars as per the contracted rate. Any discussion? Number 10, WIDA Annual Conference. It is recommended Michelle Druga and Tracy Parsons attend the WIDA Annual Conference at David L. Lawrence Convention Center in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania from October 16th through October 18th, 2024. All expenses, registration fees, travel, meals will be paid for by board policy 431, job-related expenses. The total cost will be one thousand dollars per person. Any discussion? Number 11, Category 2 E-Rate Funding. It is recommended to approve a contract between the Ambridge Area School District and Communications Consulting Inc. in using Category 2 E-Rate Funding for the district network equipment for Economy Elementary, Middle School, High School and the Field House. The total cost of the project is one hundred and ninety-three thousand and ninety-one dollars. Pending E-Rate Funding approval, the E-Rate Program will pay eighty percent or one hundred and fifty-four thousand four hundred and seventy-two dollars and eighty percent of the total cost. The Ambridge Area School District will pay approximately twenty percent, thirty-eight thousand six hundred and eighteen dollars and twenty cents of the total cost. Any discussion?
Yes, Dr. Pescarella, could you please talk about that a little bit? Could you please talk about that a little bit, Dr. Pescarella?
The category E-Rate Funding?
Yes.
Yes, so basically, this year, often when we do have a tech director in place, they often will help in solicit bids and there is funding that comes from E-Rate from the government that you can apply for. This year, we went with a company, as we know, in place for just this one year, who will take a small percentage of that. But they go out and they secure bids for projects that we need to do to update certain E-Rate Funding categories that will help basically the network of our computer systems run. And then based upon our, a formula that they figure out for our district and our application, at that point then, we get reimbursed a certain amount. So these are projects pending funding, which you usually do get the funding you want to do because they're necessary, number one, and number two, for our school system, we often fall, fall into this eighty, twenty percent split, so we're only having to pay twenty percent. So I think it's imperative that you apply and try to get these dollars for these necessary upgrades and it's great to be able to get that type of reimbursement to complete the project.
Thanks.
Thank you. Number 12, mental health support. It is recommended to approve a contract between the Ambridge Area School District and the Prevention Network for five days a week at the high school, two days a week at the middle school and one day a week at each elementary school for the 2024-2025 school year to provide mental health support at a cost of one hundred and six thousand dollars, to be paid for through the bipartisan Safer Communities Act Stronger Connections Title IV Competitive Grant. Any discussion? Number 13, Summer Credit Recovery Program. It is recommended to approve a summer credit recovery program to provide high school students the opportunity to recover course credits. This program is tentatively scheduled based on adequate enrollment for Wednesday, June 12th, 2024 through Tuesday, June 25th, 2024, from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM at Ambridge Area High School. This is at no cost to the district. Any discussion on that?
Just in general, I did want to make one comment about the grant. I know we said this last week, but that was a competitive grant that we were able to receive. We're really excited about the balance between school safety and also being able to do a lot of mental health support. I'd like to make sure that I thank Dr. Filipowski and also the assistance of Mr. King, as well as, you know, the entire administrative team who worked on that. It was a large grant. They were, they put a lot of time into that. We're fortunate to get it. And I think that balance between safety on one end, working with Chief DeLuca, you know, really strong relationship there, piloted some of that at our football game. You know, we always want to try to make sure that we're safer today than we were yesterday. Nothing's perfect, but we continue to work on that. I think it was, was powerful, along with, you know, Dr. Filipowski's research into Rachel's Challenge, some of the other mental health components that are going to really help support our students here. And I think this is, you know, along with some of our initiatives, we've been working on being the kind kid and, and those types of things across the district that we're seeing will pay dividends to have a positive environment for our students to excel. So just want to thank, thank those folks in particular for that work. We're excited about the implementation of this into the future years and I know it's going to play great, you know, dividends to our students. Thank you for, for giving me a second to, to mention that.
Thank you very much. President Carpenter, that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you. Finance and budget, Mr. Zachi?
Before I read the three items here, I was provided the numbers from my earlier question, so here they are for, for everybody. This year spent so far is five point six million dollars to outside schools tuition. The proposed budget that we passed earlier is the fifty-eight million nine seventy-nine and the proposed new amount is eight million thirty-six dollars. In that, as we stated before, is a six hundred thousand dollar projected increase. So we were, of the five point six, we're looking at seven point two total expenditure.
We're budgeting conservatively, yes.
Okay, so that eight, eight oh three six is probably higher, will be low.
Well, that's what we have in our current proposed budget.
Okay.
Yes, because we budget conservatively for that number, yes. But current to date, we have spent five million six hundred and forty thousand dollars nine hundred and, I'm sorry, five hundred and six hundred and forty thousand nine hundred and nineteen dollars.
And by my math, with the proposed new amount in the budget, we're looking at thirteen point six of the total fifty-eight point nine million dollar budget. So just a point of information. Anybody have any other questions?
I have a quick question. When you said five point six mil approximately, that's to date, meaning not through the rest of the school year, correct?
No, that's current, to date, as of today.
Thank you.
Yes.
And my items here, the school district monthly bills and salaries. It's recommended to approve the monthly school district bills in the amount of the item, amount listed and the monthly school district personnel salaries, also the amount listed. For number two, the cafeteria bills and salaries, it's recommended that the monthly cafeteria bills in the amount of sixty-eight two oh seven and the monthly cafeteria personnel salaries in the amount of fifty-four two twenty-four be paid. And finally, number three, it is recommended to approve the renewal fees for the 24-25 school year Pennsylvania School Board Association, also the PSBA, membership for a total cost of fourteen thousand five hundred and sixty-five dollars forty-two cents. Any discussions on one through three? Mr. Carpenter?
Thank you, Mr. Zachi. Buildings and grounds, Mr. Metz?
Yes, number one, concrete pad project, pole building. It is recommended to accept the bid proposal from, for the grading site work, base preparation and insulation of concrete pad for the district's pole building for the cost of, through the bidding process. Any discussion on that one?
We have a bid opening sometime, hopefully if it's not before this meeting, next meeting, but we're hoping to do that, correct?
That is correct.
Yeah, so then we'll be able to, the most appropriate bid, we would be able to put that company and the cost in because that went out for sealed bid. For those that may not know, we are looking at, we've already approved the construction of a pole building. This is for the concrete work that would go underneath of that to house many of the things, as many may or may not know for the public. Ridge road was sold, so it's to, to account for some of those supplies as well as other maintenance supplies, as well as also possibly some areas in the middle school vicinity that are being used for sports and athletics. So we're looking into possibly being able to fit some of their equipment in there as well. Thank you.
All right. Number two, window film covering. It is recommended to accept the quote for the window film coverings from Novum Design from Novum Design to be used throughout the district for safe purposes for the total cost of twenty-four thousand, one hundred and forty-two dollars and ninety-two cents through the state bidding process, CoStar, to be paid for by the PCCD School Mental Health and Safety and Security Grant. Any?
I'll just make a quick comment on that. We, we did get grant funding through PCCD, and one of the things that is advised is in, in high-populated areas, main doors, cafeterias, those types of things, trying to get some covering. This, we've seen through Novum Design, a very nice look. I know the board's been able to take a look at that. It will be a bridger design that will also not only serve the purpose mainly for safety, but also, I think, make the buildings look really sharp. It's not going to be every door, but it, or every window, obviously, for the entire district, but it will be key spots and positions in regards to safety, main doors, and, and other issues that we identified through our walkthrough as key spots. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Metz, Dr. Pascarella. Athletics, Mrs. Fisher, anything to cover?
Nothing to report this evening. However, I would like to thank the coaches that were all listed on here for stepping up and taking care of our children. Thank you for that, we appreciate that.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Mrs. Kehoe, Staring and Rules, anything?
I have no items for discussion this evening.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Kehoe. Ms. Fitzco, Public Relations or Legislative, anything to cover?
I have nothing for either of those this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Fitzco. With that, I don't have a whole lot to say tonight, other than, regardless of what you may think, it is good to see you all here. Usually, we speak to empty seats, so it's good to see people in the seats. So thank you for coming. And I just want to say how proud I am of the administrative team and the support team that has put together the kinds of grants that they've been able to spend the time and the effort on to put together for our kids. They've been able to do some amazing things for our community's kids over the past year, and this last grant was just another great example of that. So I know there's so many hands in that pot, and I know that I'm going to forget a name, so I'm not even going to try. But I just want to thank everybody that was involved, and know that I believe you're appreciated by everybody on this board, and certainly myself, certainly the community and the kids do too. So thank you very much for that. With that, Dr. Pascarella?
Yes, thank you. I just, just again, want to congratulate all of our students that have done great things, both in the classroom. I hope you got to see, if you, I think we mentioned this maybe last month, but in case some of you didn't, just want to congratulate our musical again. What a finishing product that we get to see in our, in our district and, and see those kids shine. I was really proud of them. Obviously, transitioning into spring sports, hopefully, the weather will be as cooperative as possible for those that need it, and we get some nice days out there, but looking forward to seeing those kids continue to compete out there, as well as all of our clubs and, that, that we have going on for all the kids. Really proud of them. Thanks to our community and our teaching staff and our support staff, and everyone who makes the district thrive. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pascarella. Solicitor Turnbull?
Thank you. I just want to frame an issue that I believe, based on the matching T-shirts, may have brought many of you to, to our meeting this evening, and that relates to the application for renewal for the Baden Academy Charter School. So I just want to share that the district is in receipt of the request on behalf of, of the Baden Academy Charter School for a renewal. The Ambrose Area School District has, the chartering school district has an obligation to review that, that request with good faith, and so we've been participating in a process with your administrators to gather requested information. That information has been shared with the district for their review. A walkthrough of your, of that facility was conducted, I believe, last month. And so with that information in mind, it, it then drives a decision point and a recommendation on the part of the administration to this school board, whether or not to, to acknowledge that request or to respond with those rights that the district has under the charter school law. So at this time, we are anticipating that the administration will be prepared to make a recommendation to the school board next week at its voting meeting. That meeting is public and advertised, consistent with the Sunshine Law, and so you'll see that agenda posted at least twenty-four hours in advance on our website. After that, we'll go through whatever process the board directs it, but it is a board decision and has not been pre-decided at this point. I understand that, that there is concern because a hearing was identified and made public. I will share that that is completely contingent on the board's action next week, and that, you know, in the event that the board chooses to go in a different direction, that hearing will simply be canceled. There is, there's nothing magical about that. Alternatively, the reason for posting it in the advance as early as we did truly was to promote the maximum amount of transparency and engagement about the issue, and you have taken up that, that opportunity and your rights to, to appear in front of this school board. The next item, or one that follows shortly here after me talking, is going to be public comment. In the second public comment, you'll hear the instructions, but this is an invitation to speak on any item, and so this will be the, the place for, for Madam Mayor to, to return to the podium, should she wish to do so, or anyone else. We do have rules about public comments, so you'll see that I, I will be keeping the shot clock on that three minutes, and that, and, and we'll go for about half an hour, and that is just to, to allow the, the most number of people to participate as possible. Our, our rules do also encourage, if there is a spokesperson or a, a number, we want to make sure that those folks get up first, if you've decided that in advance or not. That's certainly a, a matter of your choosing, but we want to, to invite those at the appropriate time, and we do give preference to, and, and this period is truly designed for district residents. So if that can be reflected in the representatives that, that you have tonight, speak to the board should you wish to do so, we, we respect that and appreciate it.
Thank you, Solicitor Turnbull. It's now time for old and new business, which you've all been waiting for. Any district resident who desires to comment on any business relevant to the Ambrose Area School District should now come forward. Each person must state their first and last name and address prior to speaking. Each person will be allowed three minutes and can speak only once. This period for public comment prior to the standing committee reports will be limited to one half hour. And with, with that, I turn the microphone to you.
Good evening, and thank you for extending this time to speak on behalf of Baden Academy community. Regarding the recent recommendation for non-renewal of the charter, I am Maximilian Elliott. My address is three eighteen Park Road. I'm an eighteen-year resident of the Ambrose Area School District. I serve on Ambrose's Planning Committee. I'm a property owner, a taxpayer, and a parent of a twenty-eighteen Baden grad who will be soon a two thousand twenty-four graduate of Ambrose High School. My son loved his years at Baden Academy. They were quite informational. He, he's currently across the hall, actually, with his team practicing volleyball, which he loves. He is a bridger. I have people at this school stop me at the door and in the atrium to tell me how wonderful the character of this young man is. Baden Academy shaped him. His teachers, he goes back to visit. Miss Black, who taught him to love math, and Miss Reinheimer, who taught him not to hate reading. He goes back and visits the two deans. He loves it. During elementary school, my son danced at Pittsburgh Ballet Theater. So when it was time to transition to middle school, Lincoln Park was not our choice because Lincoln Park did not fit into his extracurricular activities. One of the foundational principles of education is choice. Parents and students should have a freedom to choose the educational environment that best suits their needs and aspirations. By not renewing Baden's charter, you would be depriving countless families of this fundamental right to choose. Many Baden students have found something in this school that they have not found in their home district schools. Perhaps it's a teaching style, or smaller class size, or more inclusive community. Whatever the reason, Baden has become a beacon of hope and opportunity for those children and their families. Disrupting a learning environment of a school should never be taken lightly. The consequences extend far beyond administrative decisions. They impact the lives and futures of those students. School is not just a building, it is a sanctuary of learning, growth, and belonging. To dismantle such a vital institution would be a disservice to the children who rely on Baden for support and inspiration. I urge you to reconsider your recommendation for non-renewal and recognize that Baden Academy plays a great part in the lives of many, many students. Thank you for taking the time to consider my perspective. I remain hopeful for a positive outcome that prioritizes the well-being and educational opportunity of our students.
Thank you.
I have a story next to a thirty-second. Go on, Maximilian. This is my third meeting after work this week, so I'm a little tired. My name is Tina Yerfido Miller. First, before I go into it, I want to thank, because before I take off my mayor hat, we have worked together. The police department has formed a great SRO program. I'd like to continue that work. Actually, I'm better drafted for my secretary to send you as the board next week, because as a mayor, I'm starting a possible outreach program to get to this incident. I know you guys would find it do something like that, so look for my letter, it's coming soon. That being said, can you hear me?
No.
Not, not clearly. That being said, I want you to know that I, I am here today not only after the bird, Ambrose, not out from the office of my mayor. I am here as a resident, a taxpayer, and I have never been to a school board meeting before because I never really had to. What right did I have? I said my kid's a reporter, so I said, it's, I didn't want to get involved. There was things that happened that I never wanted to be involved in because I felt like I didn't have a voice in that. But I will work with you, I will do whatever we have to do to work together. I want you guys to know that I believe in Ambrose. I believe Gordon Gray. I'm the third generation of my family to serve as an elected official. I'm the first female mayor. I promise you, I am all about Ambrose. And I wanted my daughter to come to Ambrose, but she was different. She was not like me. Unfortunately, you can ask Mr. Lloyd, I don't have a musical bone in my body. I'm not artistic at all. My kid was different when she was born. When she was around three years old, I noticed something different in her. So when it came time for kindergarten, my niece, the sixth-grade teacher that Maximilian just told you about, she taught at Baden Academy. So I'm like, let's explore this option. I explored the option. It was a good fit for her. It was hard for me because I wanted my daughter to graduate a bridger. I'm class of ninety-two, every-year Fito that lived in Ambrose graduated from Ambrose from the nineteen fifties on. But Baden Academy brought out something in my daughter that I could have never given her. I know you guys have a great program for, for your theater and what have you, but the musical abilities they've given my daughter and her trying out for Lincoln Park and making it in the first try, it was something special to her. So I, I know it's a numbers game. I know it's, you have a budget. I know you're losing money from charter and soccer schools. I get that. I've had to make really hard decisions, just like you. I've been in really bad situations. I've been elected official for sixteen years. I've dedicated my life to this town, my whole adult life, from the time I left college on. Do not, first of all, take away the two hundred and fifty-six? Two hundred and forty-six students away from the school that they love so much. I mean, it, I want, every time I ever voted on anything as an elected official, I voted for my heart, my guidance, and so I can sleep at night. Imagine if that was your kid at Baden Academy. Would you want someone to say, we're not going to renew your, your charter, you have to go somewhere else? And retention-wise, oh, how many kids of, of the two hundred and forty-six that you think we're going to get back? Maybe a handful. My three minutes up?
It is.
Okay. But that being said, look, if I could just close it out, plus, it would, it would be not do, be right for the people that work there too. Those teachers need those jobs, the staff needs those jobs. It would be increasing the unemployment rate of everyone. But thank you, everyone, for all you're doing. Dr. Pascarella, I'm. Thanks to me.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Caitlin Davidson. I reside at nine thirty-six Beverly and Wood Avenue, Harmony Township. First, I'd like to just say thank you to Peter Roche and Anthony Spicer, who are both here running this down tonight. They are Baden Academy graduates. Ladies and gentlemen of the Ambrose Area School District Board of Directors and Administration, I stand before you today with a deep sense of pride and responsibility as the Director of Student Services of Baden Academy Charter School. As a lifelong resident of this district and a proud two thousand and seven graduate of your high school, I understand the importance of providing a quality education that meets the diverse needs of our students. At Baden Academy, we embrace a unique educational approach centered around arts integration. Our belief is simple, yet profound. By infusing the arts into every aspect of learning, we foster creativity, critical thinking, and a deeper understanding of academic concepts. Our students don't just memorize facts. They paint them, they sing them, and they dance them into their hearts and minds. I have been a member of Baden Academy staff since its inception in two thousand and twelve. Our journey has been one of resilience and dedication to providing exceptional education to the students of the Ambrose School District and beyond. It is crucial to note that in our last renewal in two thousand and seventeen, the Ambrose School Board not only reaffirmed our charter, but granted us an additional two years due to our positive relationship and commitment to excellence. Since this renewal, we have continued to operate in much the same capacity, if not stronger. We have remained steadfast in our mission to offer a comprehensive arts-infused education to our students with a focus on nurturing creativity and academic excellence. Our dedication has resulted in a thriving school community. However, despite our proven track record and continued success, we now face the possibility of non-renewal. A decision to deny our charter would not only disrupt the education of six hundred students, but would also directly impact the livelihoods of a hundred and seventy-two individuals who depend on Baden Academy for employment and support. I want to ensure the Ambrose School District that we are willing and committed to addressing any concerns or issues that may have arisen. I urge each of you, esteemed members of the board, to come and experience the vibrant energy of Baden Academy firsthand. Witness the smiling faces of six hundred students as they walk through our doors each day, eager to learn and grow. Join us for our upcoming musical on April twenty-seventh to see the talents and creativity and teamwork that our students and staff exemplify. In conclusion, I appeal to you to recognize the invaluable contributions of Baden Academy Charter School to our community and to renew our charter. Together, let us continue to nurture the hearts and minds of our students, empowering them to create a brighter future for themselves and generations. Thank you.
My name is Cindal O'Witt. My name is Cindal O'Witt. I live on the three hundred, three hundred State Street. I was a student at Baden Academy Charter School. I have been at Baden Academy since kindergarten. At first, I didn't think I would meet any people nor meet any friends, but then my teacher introduced me to some, some of the kids, and some of those kids became my friends, and that's what started my life at Baden Academy. I love coming to school for math, art, theater, social studies, music, ELA, and science. I used to struggle with math a lot, but when I met Miss Black, I became way better at math. She helped me through problems that I don't understand. She's been the most wonderful teacher I have ever had. Anytime I walk into my ELA class, I feel like I have entered my safe place. Yes, some kids will talk over Mrs. Reinheimer, but I try my best to listen, and she has helped me love reading a little bit more than I used to. I may not like science, but I love learning new things and trying experiments with Mrs. Wrangle. Mrs. Wrangle has been the most amazing science teacher that I've ever had. I love that she got the job of a sixth grade science teacher. Sir, right now I have a substitute for social studies, but her and my actual social studies teacher have taught me so much about history. Mrs. Ivy has taught me the most wonderful stuff. Sure, half the lessons can be boring to some, but I love learning about what our country has become. I never really found out what I liked before joining theater and art. Mr. Gallagher may be tough on us, but he's doing it to teach us, and I love that about him. Mrs. Karyadis has done an amazing job at exposing me to art. She has also helped me find what I love to do. I never really thought about doing any type of art before, but now I'm an editor thanks to her. I have met so many wonderful people here at this school, I don't want to lose any of these people. You have to help me through my journey at Baden Academy. I would like to thank Gianna Miller for helping me this year. She's told me about sixth grade when I was in fifth grade, and now she talks to me about Lincoln Park and what she'll think I'll love there. And I think I will love the things she has told me about. This school helped me find my voice, so please don't shut down the school. I want to keep learning. I would love to visit when I leave. Thank you and have a good night.
My name is Hillary Gliddowich. I live at three hundred State Street, Baden. I am a Baden Academy parent, that was my daughter. I am also a staff person and an Amber Ridge School District resident. As a parent, I've seen firsthand the positive impact our school has had on my three daughters' education and overall development. The unique approach to learning, the nurturing environment, and the dedicated teachers have all contributed significantly to my daughters' academic successes and personal growths. My daughters have loved the stage since they were young. Since attending Baden Academy, they have had the opportunity to perform in countless plays and musicals since they started the school in kindergarten. They have also had the opportunity to write and perform in their own plays. They have enjoyed countless opportunities with the Pittsburgh Cultural Trust that have included weekly lessons with visiting artists, as well as visits to Heinz Hall and the Benedim for performances from the Pittsburgh Cultural Trust and Symphony. I have a daughter who is one of seven students at Baden Academy who was selected to perform at Grove Soothing High School in the PMEA District Five Chorus Fest this Friday. All three of my daughters have enjoyed taking Spanish since they started the school in kindergarten. I have also had the privilege of working with some amazing educators who have had a profound and lifelong effect on my daughters, which you just heard her say. I believe that revoking our charter would not only disrupt the educational journey of current students, but also deprive future students of opportunities, the opportunities for the arts that our school provides. Furthermore, as a faculty member, I have witnessed the tireless efforts and dedication of our teaching staff. We have worked diligently to create a curriculum that's engaging, relevant, and fosters a love for learning and the arts among our students. Once a student steps into my classroom, they become my student and will always be my student. I was also nominated and recognized by a parent through One Four Three Rising, which is a Pennsylvania Coalition of Public Charter Schools, for the assistance that I had given her daughter during her time in my classroom. Although our relationship started as a parent-teacher relationship, I now have the privilege of calling her a coworker. As a school, we are here for these students. We give our everything to these kids. We stay up late for them, we lose sleep over them. We come into school early for them. Revoking the charter would not only undermine the hard work of our faculty, but also limit our ability to continue offering quality education through the arts to them. I understand that the decision to revoke a charter is a complex one and requires careful consideration of various factors. However, I urge you to take into account the voices of these parents, students, and faculty who are deeply invested in the success of our school. I believe that with open dialogue and collaboration, we, along with the Amber Ridge School District, can work towards a solution that preserves the integrity of our school while addressing any areas you may have with a need for improvement. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen of the school board, thank you for allowing me this time. My name is Joan Rim. I am a twenty-five-year resident of Baden at ten sixty-four North Avenue and a parent of a child who graduated from Baden. I'd also like to say I'm a teaching assistant at Baden Academy and a licensed realtor in the state of Pennsylvania. That being said, I'd like to state that prior to ever having had personal or professional connection to the Baden Academy, I was a supportive member of the local community who has always been in favor of Baden in my neighborhood. I firmly believe that child education is one of the most important things that we as adults can give our children, as I'm sure you also do. A well-rounded academic experience is vital to their growth. As a teaching assistant, I can speak to the educational approach of student-centered teaching that I've witnessed and employed at Baden Academy. Although there are hundreds of students, the majority of teachers know the better part of the population by name and express a genuine personal interest in the students daily. Personally, I, along with two other teaching assistants, work with small groups of students from each grade level daily, instructing them in the Wilson Reading Room. These small groups give a more one-on-one style approach to encourage and teach reading skills that the students may need assistance with. The growth I've seen since the beginning of the school year has been amazing and shows that this type of approach really does work. Now that I've expressed my personal thoughts and opinions, as a member of the community, as well as a current employee of Baden Academy, I'd like to speak as a licensed realtor in the state of Pennsylvania and doing business primarily in Union County. Over the past decade, I've sold many homes in the area and have often been told by young families that part of the reason they were looking in a specific area, mostly Amber Ridge and Baden, is because they had a desire for their children to attend Baden Academy. It says a lot to me to know that people are making the biggest purchase of their lives partially based on where their children attend school. Currently, there are students enrolled whose families I have found homes for in the community. These are now tax-paying members of the school district who are an important part of our local economy. I sincerely hope that you will see clearly to renew the charter for a school that has become such a part of the threat of our local community in Baden, as well as the Amber Ridge School District. In closing, I would like to reiterate that as a member of the immediate community, a current employee of Baden, and a licensed realtor doing business in the area, I believe that it is of extreme importance to keep Baden Academy providing outstanding educational experiences to its students by supporting families of current and student alumni, current and alumni students, as well as future students. Thank you for taking the time to give me the opportunity to speak and express my personal professional opinions.
Good evening. My name is Patty Ferretto, and I reside at three oh eight Sunset Drive in Baden. I began working at Baden Academy during the two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two school year as a cafeteria aide. Even working in the cafeteria, I noticed how much the staff cared about the students. During the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three school year, I decided I wanted to make more of an impact and requested to work within the school building. I began as an aide for the student with an IEP in January of two thousand and twenty-three. This was the best decision I've made since working at Baden Academy. It brings me so much joy to be helping the students. If it wasn't for the encouragement of my coworkers, I may still be a cafeteria aide. But because the staff at Baden Academy is so wonderful, I'm now able to encourage the students to do better and reach beyond. Working in the building, I have seen the students encourage each other. I have never seen so much kindness and compassion between the students. I am currently an aide in the learning support classroom and have seen the growth, so much due to the kindness and encouragement of their peers, as well as the caring adults in the classroom. We are our family and our grill, and we want what's best for all of the students at Baden Academy. As a parent of two Amber Ridge alumni, I never saw encouragement or compassion between the teacher and my children. They were not given the opportunity to excel. They didn't do well on the PSSAs. And it wasn't until they graduated from Amber Ridge that they truly began to excel. A more specific example is that when my son was in school, he was told by a teacher, a specific math teacher, and I quote, "You will never amount to anything." How awful my son had to hear those words from someone who was supposed to be encouraging him and helping him. Well, let me tell you, since graduating, my son has excelled. He went to Gannon University, then Salish University, and has become a physician's assistant. He continued his education as a PhD and teaches classes for students incoming PAs. What I'm trying to point out here is that teachers and staff at Baden Academy actually want our students to excel and do better every day. We at Baden Academy are helping our students succeed now and throughout their future education careers. I'm asking you to renew the charter for Baden Academy and let these children excel now, rather than excel in their education journey. Don't disrupt their lives.
Ma'am, ma'am, I'm sorry, could you stand a little, pull up just closer?
Yeah. Can you hear me now?
You have to be almost right in it.
Okay. I have three kids for attending Baden. I feel safe for my kids to go to attend the school. My oldest, who's attending sixth grade, has special needs, and I feel safe for him to go there. I know he's been looked after and protected by staff. My eighteen-year-old, who graduated from Amber Ridge last year, I always had a problem with teachers getting back to me. Principals will never get back to me. With Baden, if I contact a teacher, I know I'll hear back from them. But at the end of the day, Mr. Jeffers has been at Baden forever, and if I need to get hold of him, I know he'll get back to me within twenty-four hours. I don't need to be chasing him. The Amber Ridge Beyond students, just as a number in the classroom, principals change very often, and I know they don't have my child's back. My son was bullied a couple years back, which I didn't know until Mr. Jeffers called me. That is a true principal who is looking out for his students and making them feel safe. I don't have to worry or wonder if my child is a number there. I know they have, they've been looked and protected. Every single staff there protected their students. Every single staff there has time to get to me, to their parents. We not pushed away, our emails not ignored. My oldest learned how to write checks in third grade in Baden, when my eighteen-year-old didn't learn till now. I know my concerns in Baden matter. To the staff in Amber Ridge, my emails or phone calls were disregarded and never returned. Please tell me how safe should I feel sending my child to Amber Ridge? My youngest had speech there last year and gets further this year with Ms. Kylie, receiver. She sat down with me and told me, advised me what I should do, encouraged me to take him for further testing, when in Amber Ridge it was ignored. Why would it dismiss and hide them? I have no idea. How can I feel safe for my child to go there and him thrive there? Where here I know every single teacher looking out for their students, and they want them to thrive in life. Children became like a family. When I go to pick up my kid or I have IEP meeting, I see how front office interacted with the student, and it melts my heart. Once again, those kids feel safe and protected. My child not just a number in your classroom, he is a student who needs to learn how to write a check in the future. We're not going to give up. Please keep with Baden. Open.
Great, thank you. Fabiola Gergrich, twenty-six, twenty-three, Woodland Road, Harmony Township. If you guys are familiar with me. I'm going to be the boring person this evening. I'm actually going to talk about your agenda, so please be patient since I didn't get an agenda, so bear with me on the phone here. On page two, with that bipartisan grant, acceptives. Juan, can you explain how it actually works? How are we helping the students?
Fabiola, I'm sorry, just a little closer.
Yeah, yeah, not a problem. Can you explain how it's actually going to be helping the students? And are parents notified? Where are the parents in all of this with the mental health? I don't know if Garrett can respond to the no and yes that he said on the budget. Thank you so much. And it's not, that's all right. Number six, on page three, number six, the homeless liaison coordinator. I remember that in the past, or maybe it has been, again, how does that also work? How are we helping with the students on that? I know that I mentioned this before in the past, for you who are new, I know you didn't hear this, but the old members have heard me, and I always go back. It comes back to the home life, the breakdown of the family, and these stupid things, they're not smart, is what's killing our students. Page five, I believe. The CT grant cost. I just wanted to clarify, is that only just for the scanners? Which, again, I just find it really heartbreaking that this is where we are in society, which goes back to what I just said. It goes back to the home life and this. But anyways, moving on. On the book series, the raw, et cetera. Are these just digital or they book series? Can you explain a little more? I know this for a five-year. My final one, sorry, was number twelve, I think it was page six. Yeah, the mental health support, going back. Are parents involved or are they notified? Because everyone, I think, saw on the news lately what happened with those parents who just bought fifteen years, right, in prison, right? So first of all, I don't think it's the school's responsibility to be the parent to the child. Parents ought to be the parents. The school is the school. Their only purpose is to be teaching, reading, writing, arithmetic, and nothing else, in my side. So I just really want to know, is the school on this? How are the parents involved? And involves anything else beyond LEAST or SSI, whatever? Yeah, the window coverings. All right, well, this is my last one. The window film coverings. Dr. Pascarella said something about it being for safety. I'm not quite sure how that is safety. Explain that.
We got it.
That's it?
Go ahead.
Thank you, sorry.
All right, I'll try to answer the ones that I can answer that you brought up. The bipartisan grant, it says, how is it helping students and parents? Well, a lot of what we just talked about on this agenda is how I feel it will help students and parents. And I'll kind of tie that into, yes, there are Evolve scanners that help to scan for and detect any type of weapons and those types of things to create a safe environment. But in addition to that, we also approved the prevention network that helps with mental health support. We extended our elementary school guidance counselor with this grant money. And furthermore, we talked a little bit about that program quite extensively, about Rachel's challenge, and how that would incorporate parents, family, community, students into the program to try to work as a comprehensive plan to try to go from both sides, right? Preventive, trying to deal with the mental health. I think you asked some questions about how will parents be notified or are they notified? Obviously, we do notify parents. I know that myself, I've substituted as a principal in buildings quite frequently, actually. So I know firsthand that when we are in the buildings, if we do have any issue or any safety or concern of discipline or any types of comments with regards to mental health, we definitely notify the parents, explain to them, share resources that are available, follow up with SAP teams and other folks that are able to have school-based mental health in addition to what's available in this grant. So we do a lot of communicating with our parents and staff, excuse me, with our parents and incorporating our staff so that we can support those kids. So the grant is a comprehensive grant for quite a bit of dollars, both on the mental health and on the safety component. Yeah, the scanner for Evolve, that is a yes, that's one of the items on the agenda. We talked about book series. Mr. King can jump in if I'm wrong on any point, but most of it, we do have hands-on materials, we also have consumables, and we do have some components of online as we are, you know, one-to-one device district. So it's kind of a So it's kind of a combination. I'll also reiterate that if you look at that, it's a five-year deal. So I think that's also important to note in the cost. I think I answered that one pretty well. The film, the window film, yes. There was a variety of things. We had the state police come visit our buildings. They did an assessment of all of our buildings, and then we used grant monies to prioritize what we needed to do. Some of those things that we've already done included, you know, new locks at our middle school because those ones needed to be updated. I included loudspeakers for communication purposes in some cases, fencing in areas of playgrounds. And all these things were recommended by the state police and others from that safety assessment. As we worked through, some of the things came in, a little under budget, which was great, allowed us to look at additional opportunities. This was something that was recommended by the state police and their safety and experience and background. They also talked a little bit about how do we take these main areas and how do we provide film and coverage? And it's an important component. We looked at one that would also do that, would be sustainable, and also be a nice professional look for the school system in front of our beautiful buildings, to be honest with you. So it's not going to get on every window, but it's definitely going to be there. It's going to look professional and classy for our community while offering safety. And the last one, oh, homeless liaison. We have a homeless liaison. It's important that every district have that. Mrs. Hoover is our State Street Elementary Principal and does wonderful work with our students across the district that are experiencing homelessness, making sure we work with them to continue their education. But more than that, in addition to that, she utilizes a lot of local resources that is able to secure temporary housing, food, clothing, working with a lot of agencies. She does wonderful work with that for a lot of people. So it's a nice opportunity. I'm actually glad you brought it up because it's a nice time to be able to celebrate her work that she does for our kids in our community. It's really important work. And so this is just a small stipend. We could never give her probably what the job entails, but it's a little stipend to say, we appreciate you being able to go out to that conference, to be able to go and spend extra time on top of your duties of your day to make sure all the kids that are experiencing this can get through that as effectively as possible without a break in their education and making sure that we care about them and their home life. So I think I answered that. And the last thing, I think, well, that wasn't directed to me. We do have quite a few homeless, and that fluctuates, you know. I'll tell you this, it's more than a handful. And I'll just stop there. I think that's what's appropriate at this time, to be professional and respectful of everybody.
I appreciate the questions. For me, I need a little more time to digest the transitions in the budget that some of the other members have worked on. I will be sitting down and talking to them, so I understand better. That's the reason that I, for the TIPS program, it's another item that I just want to make sure I fully understand what that is as well, as many of you just don't want to go blindly saying yes or no to certain things. And as far as being a basketball coach, I have a personal relationship with my family and didn't feel appropriate to divulge this.
Thank you, Mr. Kavasim.
President Carpenter, can I just reiterate on Mrs. Hoover? I've worked with Mrs. Hoover, who is the homeless liaison for, well, my daughter will be 24, so for a pretty long time since she's been with the district. And I can tell you, this woman, I just met with her today, as a matter of fact, on putting some things together for the district. This woman goes above and beyond her job. And I'm not speaking her principal job, but even as a homeless liaison. She drives anywhere and everywhere to get free materials for our children, you know, speaks with several businesses and partners with many, many people in all different areas. So I just wanted to reiterate that, that she is an integral part of our district community, and she does fabulous, fabulous work for our kids, especially those that are in need. Oh, no. I know you weren't being, I just wanted you to understand, she's really an integral part and goes above and beyond, just to make that clear. She's a great lady.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Please.
Hello, I'm Amanda Heschler, and I live at 777 Conwayville Rose Road. I want to start real quick with a question that was just asked for me to bring up about the Providence Dyslexia School that was just opened, in terms of like how much money is getting spent towards them overall if they're a newer school and we've already existed. So on that, I will start with what I have written. So I'm standing here today as not only a proud parent of Baden Academy's students, but also as a certified special education teacher at a residential treatment facility. As you all know very well, not every child grows and learns the same way. Some excelled sports, some strictly in academics, and some in the arts and sciences. I, myself, don't think that I would have been successful in school growing up if I didn't have the musical and artistic outlets that I had access to. I know that one of your very own school board members thrived in the arts department and went on to major in music in college, sitting alongside me in the SRU band. I can, ooh, excuse me. That being said, I can only imagine how much easier things would have been and how much quicker I would have understood concepts in school if they were presented in a creative way that my brain could easily comprehend. It would have not only improved my grades, but my self-esteem, which is everything when you were growing and developing. The world that we live in today can be very cruel, as we were talking about with Rachel's challenge. We not only have the standard bullying that has been around since the beginning of time, but there is now the added component of social media and cyberbullying. It is extremely important for us as parents and educators to help build up our children's self-esteem when they are young. One of the main ways in which we can do that is to help them excel in school. Unfortunately, in this day and age, one of the first things that gets cut in public schools is the arts. There is already a large teacher shortage that is impacting education, and removing our children from Baden Academy is only going to intensify that shortage. Please don't take our kids away from the school where they are thriving and happy, away from their comfort zone, where they are individuals and not just statistics, where they feel like they are part of a family when they are away from their family. I beg you to think of the children first, and let them remain in their four houses that make up the one home that is Baden Academy Charter School.
Dr. Pasquarella, Solicitor Turnbull, would it be appropriate to share the Providence membership currently from Amberage Area School District for this year?
Yeah, at least the most recent, obviously, folks can enroll at any time, but the most recent that we are aware of is one student.
Can I ask a quick question? I know you have no other. It's a general question for those that might be listening. When we're talking about renewing out of the Baden Academy charter, that money that the school district, correct, Amberage School District, takes out of the students that are not in the classroom, correct? Is that correct? Like, our money leaves this art field that we do with the budget, you know, in Baden Academy, is that correct?
Correct.
I'm just asking for clarification. So I'm understanding the whole process, what's going on, because I know the teachers are amazing on both sides, both at Amberage School District and here. And I'm going to say this, adult meetings, if that's your choice if you're not at Amberage. So that being said, I feel for you as a school district board sitting up there making these business decisions, because that's what's going to come down. So...
Thank you.
That being said, I just wanted to make sure I was understanding correctly that when you're doing the budget, you're looking at the money in the budget that's not going toward the kids currently right now. In this building, classroom, or our elementary building, then it's going to another. That's basically what this renewal thing comes down to. That's just what I need to clarify.
Yes, thank you. But please, let's keep the commentary. Three minutes to speak only once. Out of courtesy to everybody that came tonight. And we are at the end of our period. But just in closing, it was, you have shared your passions, and we have all heard it. These are tough decisions. We don't do this for the pay or the fame. This is a volunteer position, and my wife asks me regularly why in the world I did it. But these are tough things, and I want you to know, we feel the passion that you're fighting for your survival. But I hope you're sharing those passions with the state of Pennsylvania as well, because much of the friction starts above your pay grade and our pay grade. So I'll leave it at that. But I do appreciate you coming tonight, and that does bring us to a close. With that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
I heard a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, meaning adjourn.
Sorry, before you leave, when you were coming through, somebody left your house key. Have security, and somebody left your door. This is yours. It has a wooden keychain.
I did want to make sure he gets what he needs.
We're doing it right now.